I see New England Trail riders.
I have no doubt you may have to put the town on. I'm just looking at the board.
Howard, for the Roadie Rovers, more across vintage PWE hair scramble junior and their roosting and their old time expensive woodwork across events and additional insurance incorporated.
I apologize. I see it.
I did read it as I had said. I read all that page over in detail with the report writing, police report writing, and I read it and I had it down there. So that's not so much a concern because it is under the not an insurance incorporated. Other questions of the council before?
Well, I'd like to hear from some of the neighbors because I don't think that everything went as well as we did.
That's good. Let me ask this, not to be short changed.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. I just can't believe the time spent to not to put this, let this group do this. It was last year. Let me finish. Let me finish. Last year it was denied and it should have been approved. I was for it last year. It should have been approved. The police chief gave approval. I mean, we're splitting hairs here. We're giving these guys a heart attack. Why don't we tell everybody that owns a 100 acres out of Western County, just pay your taxes and do absolutely nothing with your property? I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable as a charitable organization. I don't think it's unreasonable. I don't think it's wrong. It's not a charitable organization.
Mr. McGee, I think if it's accurate, I think it was not denied. I think it-
It was a technicality. It was denied.
Wrong. Okay.
Yes, and Mr. McGee, you have called me personally to ask me about this race.
All right. Mr. Boss, before we go to general discussion of-
Well, I know that, for instance, I was trying to go through and, I mean, what I have on here on the ordinance is the end. And even though it's in the noise ordinance area, I mean, this ordinance has been stated here, it's been in effect since before 1994, which speaks of organized racing events. And there are certain DB levels not to go above. So obviously, there are things that are put in place to try to keep things under control and do that, you know? And it states whether it's on public property or private property. So we have the tools in place here to, you know, to see that they abide by the stipulations. Now, I'm not going to argue to, you know, our attorney says, and I honestly believe that I thought that I read myself, that it required a special use permit for that. But again, I'm not an attorney. I don't do that. But I don't, you know, I think we're splitting hairs to deny these people this right to use their property when the people have agreed to it and they're showing all the due diligence. If all the due diligence is done, I have no reason not to support this. But again, if there are stipulations involved that have to be done, they're willing to abide by that as well, as just stated. If there was a DE permit that was needed, they would get it. And again, and then with the noise levels, you know, the one question I did have, though, in this particular, I think with particular noise levels, I don't know. Do we know what the decibel levels are for that type of, you know, event?
Yes, and I read the same ordinances in the town. Every participant that comes in has to have a tech, and we check them with a sound meter. It has to be 90, 60 dB or below. And when they're, you know, I think the loss is something like a sustained 100 dB from 500 feet away or something like that. Well, well, well below that.
What I'm seeing is 90 dB over here sustained, but 90 dB at the receiving property line is where I see it. But what I also see with the particular noise levels, again, if they were going to be somewhere in that area, it states that there will be between the hours, or no, none of this noise between the hours of 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM. So I don't know if those DBs were going to somehow eclipse that, that, you know, I know you've got 9:00 AM down. And that's the only question. Again, if your DBs aren't going to get to that level, it doesn't meet the noise ordinance or violate the noise ordinance.
Yeah, the rules as far as the noise level have been based on national motorcycle institute studies. So it's, you know, well beyond just a local level thing. What we do is compliant with everybody throughout the board, throughout the country. So I don't think we'll have any issue there. As far as the timing thing, the event, you know, again, we're splitting hairs. We're not going to start bikes up at 6:00 AM. We're not trying to piss people off here.
I see in front of me a list of 35 people that have no problem with it.
And I have 118 names, I do.
How many are written?
But I think we also could hear from some of the neighbors. Well, you should have because you probably grabbed my name. But I think we could also hear from the neighbors because I had gone out there two years ago, and I know that racing lasted past the time it was supposed to stop. And so if there's anybody that wants to speak, Mr. Chippendale, our-
Could I say one other thing before I leave? As far as the stipulations that you mentioned, we did our due diligence as far as going to the town, to the zoning department and asking them. They denied us an application. Paul Shidley told me directly, I will not give you a special zoning permit because you do not-
Paul Sprague.
Paul Sprague, I'm sorry. He said, I will not give you the, start the application because you do not need one.
I wrote it.
So if I were to try to apply for that application right now, I couldn't get it in time.
Yes, you can.
I was told it was three months. That's what Jacob Peabody told me.
Didn't we?
Because it has to be advertised and so on and so forth.
The submission must be 90 days before the event. And the date stamped this year, it was, it was last year, it wasn't 90 days, but because the chief said that you had submitted it before then, the council decided to hear it. Okay?
Now, I'm talking about the zoning permit. If I were to apply for a special use zoning permit today-
Do you need to apply for a special use zoning permit? I remember speaking with you on the phone. In fact, the chief and I were in his office, and it was conveyed clearly that regardless of what Paul told you in the past, that you should apply for one out of abundant, now, this was probably more than a month ago. So there's plenty of time. In fact, I called over to our planning department for a couple of days in a row saying, have they come in and apply for it? Have they come in and applied for it?
Sir, I've never spoken to you before, so it was someone else-
I was on the phone with the chief when we were speaking to you about this application. Assuming that was, was that him?
No, it was in my office. We were talking on the phone. He was there. And I said, I don't run zoning, but I recommend you get the zoning permit because-
Right. It occurred. Let's leave it at that.
That's what I was told.
It occurred. Your party's here. All right, so is there time?
It's still encouraged, so it's well vetted and there's no questions. It's just, it's a good process to have a process.
Good process to do.
And it, you know, it's cumbersome, yes, but, you know, it's a process that allows you to say, look, we've jumped through all the hoops. We've dotted all our eyes, crossed all our Ts.
We've more than done that.
Excuse me, from what I'm hearing, though, Mr. Sprague would not give him the zoning permit.
That's correct.
And it's not the first time I've heard that.
And we're certainly not going to deny him a technicality.
How can we, how can we be talking on both sides of our mouth over here? You know, we're not on the same page. We're not on the same page.
He's a representative of the town, and if he totally didn't need it, it's a force of amazed maybe.
He's not here. He's not here. I need to talk to him.
We're going nowhere fast here, Tyler.
If I could just-
Go ahead. Yes, please do.
The gentleman said that Paul Sprague refused to certify something, right?
No. He refused to let me start the permit application process because he told me that I did not need it.
Well, I think it is up to the zoning board ultimately what zoning applies.
So then we should-
And, you know, the most he can do is give you a zoning certificate.
But how does he file the application if he's not allowed to do it?
It doesn't make sense that he's not, if somebody wants to file, I've never heard someone come into this room and say that they were denied the opportunity to file an application.
He just said it.
They can't buy, I don't know what to say.
Well, that's why unfortunately we don't have-
They can't be denied.
Can you not see all the effort? I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm just- Have you not seen all the effort that we've gone through to try to do our due diligence on this already? Do you think that we would not, you know, we're jumping through hoops here and we've never had this issue in any other town? I mean, this is a charity event for children. There's no alcohol and there's no burden on the town whatsoever. I don't even understand why there's a discussion.
The job of the council is to apply the law, and the law is that because this is not designated as either permitted or prohibited in this zoning district, it's a residential district, you have to get a special use permit. That's the law. We can't run from it. That's what it is. And for what it's worth, Mr. Nukem, when there was a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance, you and many of the Roadie Rovers came to voice your opposition to the proposed amendment. And I said that night, whether or not this amendment ever passes, it will be necessary for any motorcycle event in town to get a special use permit. I made that emphatically clear that night. So there would be no question for you or any other group that wanted to come to Coventry that the law was the law. You have to get a special use permit for that type of event because, and the reason that the amendment was offered was to clarify that it was either prohibited or allowed. And I believe the amendment was to prohibit it, and I understand. You came and protested it, which you had the right to do. But that night, I made it very clear that even if the amendment never carried, if any event like that went forward, they had to have a special use permit.
I can't, Paul, I can't twist the gentleman's arm. I went to the office and asked for the special use permit. I was told I couldn't have one because I didn't need one. And the words about where to tell you to go and everything else, I won't repeat, but believe it.
So it was a really contentious, it was a really contentious meeting with Mr. Sprague about getting, about applying for a special use permit?
There's a lot of people who agree with some of the other speakers tonight that this is just splitting hairs and it's just a ridiculous song of dance.
All right. You've had your time. Okay, thank you. And do you have anyone else you want to call?
Representative-
All right. I had a feeling this was going to go tonight.
Well, this is important, Glenn. It's important to my district.
Right, it is. And I've got a lot of-
I appreciate the time.
People that really do not want it in your district. And then we've got a lot of people that do want it.
I understand.
All right, go ahead, Rep. Good evening. Good seeing you again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Always good to see you.
Congratulations on your ratings.
On what did I do?
On your ratings. I know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you, members of the council, Solicitor, Tom Mancher, and his top clerk. I certainly don't want to rehash issues about ordinances or zoning or anything of that nature. But I do want to stick with the right up front. Since I was seven years old, I had a motorcycle, two of my legs. One of the things in Rhode Island is there's nowhere to ride. It's one of the most difficult things as a motorcycle owner and rider to actually find a place to ride a pair of bike and stay around. So I get that 100%. I want to address something that's been brought to my attention as the representative of Green, of that section of town. And that is a tremendous amount, and I think we've seen a little bit of attention here in the room this evening. There is a tremendous amount of bad will in the neighborhood with both parties. Both sides of this are very upset. We, again, we saw a little bit of it here tonight. However, I received, in addition to 100, I think it was 18 signatures on a petition, I received some handwritten or emails with some personally written information, as well as some photographs of various signs and certain activities that have taken place that cause great concern for me. As most of you know, I live in an area very similar to Green, in fact, in a butt screen. I'm not the type of person who reacts to a NIMBY. We deal, in public policy, we deal with them all the time, right? It's part of the business. NIMBY is not the type of thing that I like to deal with. But when you have an entire neighborhood of people who feel actually threatened, some folks are afraid to leave their house alone.
Really?
Yes, really.
Really?
No other comments?
You don't think they have, we do.
Excuse me.
Mr. President, I'm merely expressing-
Representative Chippendale has the floor, please.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, I'm merely reflecting what residents have told me they feel.
I understand.
So I'm not going to engage in whether or not those folks should feel any other way. However, I do want to share with the council that there is a tremendous amount of concern in an area that we're all very familiar with. Very narrow roads, houses that are in budding areas. And frankly, there has been some animosity. There was a sign that was erected across from someone's house that I found to be completely offensive, and any person, a decent person would find it offensive, in fact, even threatening. So my concern is this, there's a tinderbox in Western Coventry right now in Green, and this tinderbox is just one spark away from going up. My caution and my concern for the people that I represent is, how can this best be reconciled if an event of this nature is to be held? And certainly, again, I'm not going to address the permitting process. That's not, that's your, the job of you all to do that. But I think it would be negligent on the part of us as policymakers to avoid the foreigner on gorilla in the room, which happens to be a lot of folks who pay taxes in that area and have every right to enjoy their property, as everyone else does, are having some real problems and real intimidation that they feel, perceived or otherwise. I think that's something that's worthy of exploration by this council or zoning report or even Colonel McDonald. I don't know what step you would prescribe, however, I do believe this has to be addressed because it's going to continue to fester, and it won't be 118 people next time. It'll be 236, and we'll just keep going from there. So I'm not here to offer any advice or tell anybody what to do. I'm here to express what my constituents have expressed to me.
Okay, thank you.
And I take it very seriously, and I hope the council does as well.
You do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rep.
Thank you. Next? Sure.
Hi, my name's Thomas Mayozy, 66 Stevo. Very sometimes controversial person in the world. Thank you, Ken. I'd like to say, you know, when it comes to these guys, I'm not a member of the Roadie Rovers. I have witnessed some of their events, many of their events. They do a good job. You know, what we're talking about here is personal freedom. Where's a gun? Should we continue to allow our freedoms to be eroded? Do our kids deserve their freedoms to be eroded? I grew up in a time when you could ride a motorcycle, a dirt bike. There was no time to contemplate bad behavior, drugs, stealing, things like that. You know, kids that race motorcycles in an event are very, very well-
Did I ask those, excuse me, sir, did I ask those cell phones to be muted or actually there's an open door you can leave? All right, go ahead, sir. Please. Mr. Mayozy, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, you know, they exercise, they pay attention in school, they're good people. There's more, you know, the mere name of the event, the charity scholarship ride, says a lot for itself. And I would hope the town council would at least try the event for this year. And the neighbors. And I would hope that the Roadie Rovers would invite the neighbors to a cookout at the end of the event, or at least to the event, and let them try it for one year. And hey, if it's, if, because you know what? Lack of knowledge seems to bring in a lot of fear. Let them try it for the one year. Invite them, you know, have a cookout, and what Mr. Chippendale says is correct. There's tension, and you know what? In this country, there's too much divide. There's too many people not working together. Let's try it, see how it does, and I'll tell you what I'll do. For every dollar the Roadie Rovers raise for their charity scholarship, I'll match it dollar for dollar.
Mr. Mayozy, can I ask you a question?
Yes. No, ma'am. I own a 70-acre parcel of land, and someday I hope to live in Coventry, in your district.
Well, what I was going to ask you was, well, half of it is, yeah. And I understand it's a beautiful property. Would you want the race there? Could you host it there?
You know what? If the neighbors wanted it there, and the Roadie Rovers and the neighbors could get along and everything went well, I would be more than happy to offer it to them.
They've had a race here once before, you know? Did you know there was one a couple of years ago?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so this is not like experiment. I just find you to realize, you know, that there has been one race.
I get where you're going.
Okay.
Okay. And that's what I wanted to hear.
And I know you do have a bike, so I just-
No, that's all right. I ride, I enjoy it, and, you know, maybe I'm just, like I said, there's a lot of divisiveness in the country, in the world, I think, you know? It's a way to come together, and it's an admirable clause.
Thank you.
And I'll keep it short.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay. Mr. Jackson, but go ahead.
Oh, that's all right. No, no, can I?
Go ahead. Let's not waste any more, spend any more time. Go ahead, Mr.-
Gary Cody, 3915 Street, Coventry. I'm here to represent the motorcycle community, not particularly the Roadie Rovers. I don't own a dirt bike. I don't ride dirt bikes. I've ridden motorcycles for 50 years. The motorcycle community in the state of Rhode Island raises more money for charity than any other single organization in the state of Rhode Island. I can quantify that by just telling you, ask the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Run, and that'll show. I think it's great that an off-road motorcycle association is willing to step up and raise money for scholarships for Coventry High School students. They're not asking anything from the students except to keep their grades up, and we're going to help you go to college. Mr. McGee does it in honor of his mother and father every year. His family donates to a scholar, they give a scholarship to a Coventry High School student. I think it's admirable. I don't think it's anything that should be put down. Listen, I know there's a lot of neighbors out there. This is a two-day event out of 365 days in a year. I think for two days a year, Mr. Brown ought to be able to do whatever the hell he wants on the property that he pays taxes on to this town and has paid taxes on to this town for many, many years. Is it going to be an inconvenience to his neighbors? It may be for two days a year. The other 363 days a year, they can be inconveniences to Mr. Brown. That's okay. Mr. Brown will have to deal with that. Please take that into consideration. And if a special use permit is required, I would ask that the town take into consideration that they have been trying to do their due diligence. He was going by what Mr. Sprague told him, and work with the Roadie Rovers if you choose to let this event go forward this year, and increase the time on the process so they can get their special use permit. Thank you.
Can I ask how much the Roadie Rovers gave to the high school in 2014? Do you know?
1,200.
We've also raised over $44,000 for the West Greenwich High School.
Well, I'm just talking Coventry.
Okay, but I just wanted to let you know. I wanted to let you know what we do.
Because I saw something about $500. I was just wondering what was right.
We gave three checks for $400 from 2014, and in 2015, we took $500 out of our pocket to keep the scholarship going, even though the event was not happening.
All right.
Anybody else comment, questions?
Mr. Jackson? Thank you.
Ken Jackson, 2799 Oakne Hill. You know, the majority of these people don't live in the West End. This is going to be a big impact in Green. Lately, as a representative has said, the motorcycle groups have been agitating the onus of fireworks, signs. Keep that in mind, that that could happen again during these two days. At a minimum, I would ask, as being a Western resident, that number one, a police detail be assigned, period. And the second thing is, because we are a big territory, big district, we're limited on our fire and rescue backup. I would recommend that they hire a private company to have rescue ability there, because this is an event, I rode bikes. This is an event that there's going to be injuries of some type. Hopefully, not serious ones, but who's to know? I would ask that our fighter department, Station Eight, be as a last resort. We cannot afford to have our rescue somewhere and then have somebody with a heart attack. And seven's going to come from Tyone, or maybe Phillip Hill, perhaps. You have to remember, we residents pay taxes too. We ask you to keep us safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Kettle?
Good evening, Senator.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm the council. Nicholas Kettle, 5 Water Ridge Road, Coventry. A lot of what I'm going to say has been said, so I'll keep it brief because I know we have a very long agenda, and I appreciate the courtesy and time and people. Brief. But anyway, nothing against the Roadie Rovers. They do great work in terms of, I've heard nothing but great compliments in terms of the town of West Greenwich. They've gotten awards from the town council, but it's a little bit different because they're not riding in a residential area, okay? Where their property proposing to be riding is the neighbors. And unfortunately, as Rep. Chippendale alluded to, there is a conflict. And I have been getting numerous phone calls, emails, et cetera, from the neighbors discussing threatening behavior, whether it's signs, as you've seen the picture, somebody went on to a neighbor's property, okay, and placed a threatening sign, reports of a dog having firecrackers thrown at them, beer bottles thrown in a horse pen. Now, hopefully, it's not them, but there are police reports that have been completed that I think the council should look into. I think that the people of Green, they moved out there for a reason. My family moved out there for a reason as well. Want peace and quiet. And I think it is not out of line for this council to ask for a special use permit. And I think that essentially, we need to take into consideration the views and needs of the neighbors and that they feel threatened. What has been expressed about, you know, personal freedom, do what you want with your property, I am there. I am with you. But when you are infringing upon other people's rights to feel safe, we have a problem. And I think the council needs to step in here and do their due diligence before they grant this permit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. The gentleman in the back, outside room, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening. Peter Tanner, 387 Cannon Road, Coventry. I have been an active member of the Roadie Rovers Club for 30 years. I have helped organize many, many events with our club. As far as emergencies, being people transported away, I know of one in that time period, and that was quite some time ago. We have organized and put on very safe events over the past many years, and I'm going to back up to our 2014 event. There were no transports and no issues from that event. We had a couple of bumps and bruises that were handled on site by personnel that we had contracted with the local fire department emergency to be on hand. We've also coordinated with Chief Catrini to, you know, be on hand for this year's event if we're able to get our permit. So anyways, I mean, there's been a lot of untruths being told about our club and things that have happened. If you look back to the 2014 event, you can check with the police department, there were really no complaints after the event, so you can, that's on record. And it just seems to be that, you know, it's a good place for you to stay out of trouble and give them something to do. It's a hobby that happens with a lot of kids, and it gets them to concentrate on a sport and something that takes physical endurance and focus and things like that, and keeps them out of trouble, out of drugs, and out of bad places. It's just been a great thing for me as a person to do for the lifetime of achievements that I've done with this whole motorcycle industry and events in this club, and it's just been a great thing. And as Mr. Cody stated before, we have raised quite some amount of revenues for charities in the state. The motorcycle industry has really stepped forward more than any other community, and I just think it's a shame that people are trying to undermine this event that we have done for many years in different communities that we'd like to try and do in our home community. And I just think it's a shame that people don't give us the opportunity to put forth a nice event. And like Mr. Cody said, it's two days out of the year, and if you didn't know we were there, you probably wouldn't know. It's down in the valley. It's Mr. Brown's property. You hardly know that people are there, because you can't even see it from the roadside. So I wish you would reconsider and give us the opportunity to put this event on. We've done our due diligence to try and do everything possible set forth by us. And I know it is the council's power to waive certain things. I've seen earlier this evening by waiving some fees and other things like that. So things on that application can be waived in consideration with you all here. So we wish you would please do the right thing and allow us to have this event.
Can I ask why you're not in West Greenwich anymore?
Because Mr. Brown offered us a nice piece of property to be able to use here, and we thought it would be a good opportunity. And we didn't have another parcel over there at the moment that we were able to use.
And then, well, I can attest to how noisy it is, because I was there two years ago, standing next to, you know, Butter's backyard. So it's not really quiet.
There weren't any official complaints logged.
No, but I got a lot. Maybe they didn't go to the police department, but I certainly did as the council rep, just to let you know that there were complaints.
And Mr. Dennis, as you'll know, we do have a letter from Chief Catrini stating that everything is, the plan meets all criteria except for his office, so there's no issues. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any other questions? Thank you.
I'm almost afraid to say my address. I have no horses, but. Okay. So I've lived in Western Coventry as many people here have. I love the town that I live in. I've been there forever, the town of Coventry. My main concern, my main point is, is if we allow this event to take place for only two days, somehow, some way, whenever you allow something to happen that seems very small, then other motorcycle clubs come in, or other big trucks want to have a rally, or something else happens, and you open the door, and then you look down the road and you say, how the heck did we end up in Western Coventry with all these races and all this craziness going on? Potentially. I could be wrong. But the way that society is, I don't find that we're looking at the whole town anymore as to what is going to benefit the whole town. We're looking at what is going to personally benefit ourselves. And that's a sad day for the town of Coventry. I know that there's always been a little division between the Eastern and the Western ends. I like the Western end more than the Eastern end, but I do do my business, of course, in the Eastern end. I have paid taxes there, and I enjoy living up there in the pristine, what's still pristine, Western Coventry, as I remember Route 117 being one lane. I remember it when it was dirt. Now I find it's a racetrack up and down the road, because we have nowhere for the police to sit to try to get the traffic to stop. That's a small problem that we live with. And I know it doesn't sound to be very important when we're discussing this here, but remember that if there are not police up at this event, or any event that happens up there, it takes them fifteen minutes with the lights flashing to get up to our end in an emergency. Okay? There's other things also. There's also the environmental aspect of the whole thing. And I know people will laugh at that and go, yeah, ha, ha, ha. But you know something? It's true. Because two years ago, I was out in my backyard, and I heard all this racing going on, and I turned to my husband. It was like six o'clock at night on a Sunday. I'm like, what the heck is going on in the backwoods? And behind my house is like lots of woods, and I could hear it like it was in my backyard. I didn't know at the time what was happening or what it was until later, I had come across the information that that's what it was. Another thing that bothers me is that because of the gypsy worms and we've eaten all of the leaves on the trees, right now, the dirt is so dry that I'm concerned about the camping that's up in our area, the campers. Now we're talking about October. If we don't get any rain and it still stays dry, we're going to have people camping up in the backwoods with no regulations, like a campground house. At least in campground, they can say, hey, no campfires tonight, or right now, the season's so dry, the birds can't even get the worms out of the ground. So these are just a couple of different things, and it sounds like it's really not important, but it really is. Because when you have a group of people who want to keep Western Coventry as long as we can to be pristine, I think that the town council should really listen to the people that do live there. And maybe the roadies, I hope robbers said that right, but maybe they can take it to a town that will welcome them, and that will be fine too. It would alleviate the stress that's on the neighbors. It would alleviate the stress that's on the motorcycle riders there trying to get all these licenses. Obviously, the town up at that end right now is not ready to have this event. They feel like they're not being listened to. And I think the way that the country is right now, we can all say that we have all felt that way at one point on an issue. There have been a couple of issues that the Western end has felt, and we weren't listened to. So we have things up there now that we clearly didn't want, and we have. So we have to live with them, and that's okay. But what I'm telling you is that because this is going to, as Mr. Chippendale said, it's going to keep on increasing and increasing, the anxiety on both sides, it's not going to go anywhere good. So my suggestion is maybe they can take it right now somewhere else until maybe somewhere down the road. It will be more proven to be safer, or whatever the questions are now, it will have better uses. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Owens?
Good evening. 662 Costra, half a mile from where the event will take place. And I think what concerns me is the premise of the permit. One hundred and twenty-five plus, how can it be that day? Well, what's plus? I mean, I'm worried about the control. I'm not saying that we'll be good at that. I don't know. It might be. I hope they hold a good event if it happens. But if there's no controls, one hundred and twenty-five plus, where's the plus to me? Where do you decide plus stops? So you have to answer that question. And then, what Nicholas said, Nicholas Gorm, listen for me, Nicholas. I'm talking. I listen to you when you talk. You talk well. I listen.
We can listen and work down.
I do the same thing. I don't bring out my smartphone. But you say no tickets at the event. I agree with you. That's what it stipulates. No tickets sold at the day of the event, right? Right?
Am I being cross and silly?
Yes. But do they know that? And who enforces that?
The council.
Oh, who, like, Mr. McGee, can I call you to come down there and make sure? No, no. But you want the event, but you don't want to do anything.
Who has the authority to?
Who does have that authority? If I go there, you talk about tension. If I go down there and say, I counted one hundred and thirty-eight people, and he's selling, you know what? I'll be run over by a bike. Maybe, that'll be lucky. What I'm saying is, who controls this? I'm okay with an event if it's one twenty-five, no plus, and they don't sell them at the door. I just heard about it today. I want to come in with my eight bikes. Oh, come on in. Who stops that? Where's the police chief? Where'd he go? Can I call you?
You can call the P.E. if we can do an inspection that day. Sure. Absolutely.
You're going to count heads?
We will count heads.
You're going to go in and count heads?
I personally probably wouldn't, but send an officer in.
Yeah, but I don't, this is a vagueness that bothers me. There's a vagueness to the whole thing.
Excuse me. Mr. Owens, why did you interest the council?
Yes, thank you. Okay. I'm concerned about the vagueness.
I hear you. Loud and clear.
That's my point. Make it clear to them, it's just not anything they want, many people say they want. And I heard this said, well, why the next day? Two years ago. No alcohol? Why are there more cans of alcohol on the road that day than any other day? Maybe they don't drink it there, but I bet they're drinking it on the way in and on the way out. Who's watching off of that? And that's when the rowdy roaders become the rowdy roaders.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Come on forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? My name is Keith Taylor, and I reside at One Hwood Road, Coventry, at Outland. I've heard all the ordinance, and I'm quite surprised. Mr. Sprague is an official of this community, hired by this community. If he gave this group wrong information, it's this council's responsibility to take responsibility for that. That's the first thing. Secondly, I have fifty-six hundred people in my district. Forty-eight percent of them are impoverished. Their children are. Most of you have the same issue. So when we look at one hundred and eighteen people that are concerned about an event that's going to take two days to rectify or give a child an opportunity to go to school because of what they're doing, I would ask whether or not that's a personal issue or a self-issue. It should be a community issue. We really need to do this for the people in our community. Our schools struggle. The kids in these schools struggle. And these people want to take and do something great. I don't get it. This is a responsibility that the council has to take here. Mr. Gorm may very well be right. But because an official of the town told this group that they did not need a special permit, it's your responsibility to address that this evening. You have to do this. I don't see it any other way. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Waters, I'd like you to ask Mr. Sprague what happened at that point, please, and let us know, or let me know.
Okay, any other, any other comments? Okay. Go ahead. Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Come on forward. Name and address.
Hello. Rena La Boy.
Address.
I am not a resident of Coventry.
Okay, well, what's your address?
Fifty-nine Pound Road, Apache. I wanted to help give a bigger face to the people that attend these events, including myself. And so I promised I would not run you over when you said if you came out to the property.
Resident council.
Yes. And there's a few other things. A lot of the attendees that come to these events, there's more to it than the punk kid on the dirt bike. There's a lot of military veterans that, that back in World War II, at the end, the veterans came back, they had motorcycle clubs. Today, we don't have that freedom of the road, so we kind of have to turn. I'm a military veteran. Thank you for your service. And one of the things that I find helpful is to race my dirt bike. And I know many other military veterans find the same solace in that. And I hope that we can come together, and that the tinderbox that is in that part of the town can be resolved, and that the suggestion of Mr. Mayose of us all getting together, having a barbecue, communicating, finding a resolution, so that these people can use their property the way they want to, and that some of it can recreate different than the other people enjoy, and that we can all have a resolution together.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Gorm, should we bring the fight?
Sorry, gee. I'm sorry, I want something else to say.
What, Gary?
Hi. Just before we do, I mean, I like the idea of trying to bring the community together. Is there a way that we could have, you know, some type of work session between the neighbors who have their concerns about the vague, you know, the vagueness of the application, or about what's on here, stating that we, whether they can come up with an exact number, say probably pre-registration, you need to register, you know, prior to, so we know exactly how many people have, and no matter how many that is, that we do have a police presence there to make sure that, you know, to, again, to try to come to agreement for, you know, for everybody in the, you know, in the area. Is there a way we could do a work, you know, to bring these people together? Again, it is, it is very volatile, and none of us likes to see that.
I think that's a good suggestion. I think probably a lot of the issues came from, during that weekend, the hours were not kept. I know personally, because I went over there after they were supposed to have stopped, and they didn't. I mean, you can hear the bikes. And I think the intimidation and the threats need to stop. I have to say that, you know, as Representative District One, I have to be on the majority side, and I fully believe that, you know, I understand they're doing for charity, and I don't want to take anything away from the kids, because obviously, you know, it's all about keeping the kids happy and making sure they have something to do, and outdoors is even better. But, you know, I've had constituents that are very worried about these races and the peace and quiet, and I don't know if people want to try to come together. I'm just here tonight for this particular issue, saying, I've got, you know, I've got concerns about the EM. I know that the EM stocks the brook with trout in the spring. We've got fire issues to worry about, because one thing I thought about today was that there are going to be gas cans and things to refuel the bikes, and it's dry out in my area. It's really dry, and we've got a high probability for fires. What if there's a spark? I mean, that was something, I did talk to one of the board members today from Western Coventry Fire, and that was an issue that really wasn't discussed with the chief. The chief doesn't really live here. He's permanent part-time, Mr. Chief Catrini, so it's not like he actually lives in Western. That's consideration, too, the fire issue, campfires, and there were a lot of complaints about alcohol bottles, beer cans, things left over on the streets last year. I just want you to know, I'm trying to express to you the different comments that I've gotten. I know we've been on this a while, it's a big issue for both sides. I appreciate the council giving me the time to have people make public comment, because that doesn't always happen. So I appreciate my colleagues letting us do this. But I think it's still a responsibility of the council to make sure that the ordinances are adhered to and the permitting is adhered to. And unless Mr. Gorm has something to say, I just spoke, and then you won't listen. You could be home.
You're a member of the council.
That's okay.
Don't apologize.
I had a question, and I wanted it answered. You're prerogative, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Ex-president. Of course. Mr. Gorm, would you suggest our next step is on this? I think we need to follow procedure, though. But I'd like to say, I mean, I'd like to ask that we also put a stipulation that we get information from the EM, the compliance report or the compliance file.
You could set that as a condition, but it's not in the ordinance.
Okay.
The EM is part of the state government. Their...
Even though they've got the brook and everything on the line?
Their ability to regulate this event is superior to the town in that sphere of regulation anyway, which is, you know, wetlands and so forth. So I don't really think that it's necessary that the town impose that as a condition. I think you should stick to the...
Do we have to request the report anyway, just my information?
Well, you can request anything you want from the EM, and I think you'll get it, you know, under the access to public records, I think, typically. So, no, I would stick with what's in the ordinance, and frankly, that's what the discussion with President Chipley was about. And the ordinance very specifically gives a requirement that they can't sell entries, tickets, whatever you want to call it, the day of the event. So I suggest that you pick a day by which they have to document the number of entries that they have, probably with the police department, that's the, and then the police department can properly plan for the event. The second thing I would require as a condition is a special use permit. That's the law. I'm obligated only to the law. I believe this requires a special use permit, and the ordinance specifically acknowledges the ordinance that governs the issuance of this permit, the event permit, which is different from the special use permit. The ordinance that allows you to issue an event permit says that it doesn't supersede zoning, and nothing in this event ordinance should be construed as superseding zoning. So I think... So I think it is only prudent and really following the law to require a special use permit. I don't know what this discussion with Mr. Sprague was, but it really doesn't matter because the law is the law. And Mr. Sprague is not at liberty to suspend it. And even if the statements that have been represented to the council by Mr. Sprague or two, it doesn't matter. The council and the people come first. So that's why the rule of law is that an agent of the government does not have the power to bind this council to anything. It's ultimately up to the council. We just had a lawsuit about that. And we won.
It would not be fair to these people to use that technicality of having to get a special use permit now without being able to make their ninety days or whatever, sixty days.
I motion to wait till the time is.
Absolutely, because whether you agree with what Mrs. Sprague told.
You're making an assumption.
Just let me finish, let me finish, please. Whether you agree with it or not, he was told by a representative of the town he didn't need it. So if he's going to get, needs a special permit, fine, I'm all for it. But we should not hold it back like last year on a technicality because he's not going to make the ninety days to get the permit.
Well, I don't consider zoning to be a technicality. I think it's the law, okay? It's the law. That is, it's what preserves the town and the character of the town. But anyway, with all due respect, Member McGee, here is time. I've calculated the time, I've carefully calculated the time. And if they apply immediately, they can get on the docket for the zoning board. A special use permit also requires an advisory opinion from the planning board. They can be back in front of the zoning board for early October and their event, I think, is on October twenty-second, if I'm not mistaken. So I wouldn't have made the suggestion if they couldn't get it done in time. That would have been disingenuous and I try not to be that way.
How do they sell tickets in advance to something they don't know they're going to get a special use permit for until the two days before the event?
With due respect.
You're bending them over a barrel.
This is an ordinance that we're supposed to follow.
I would have gavelled somebody if somebody did that to you, Gary.
Excuse me, Mr. Chipley? May I have one more time, please?
No.
You should allow me to entertain this a moment. I believe Mr. Sprague is a lawyer, isn't he? So he would know the law, wouldn't he?
You're out of order.
I may be, but I'm making a point.
Just have a seat. Mr. Gorman's talking, thank you for your point, politically well put.
That's it? Those are the conditions I'd suggest.
Those are the suggestions. Now, I know we have a motion to approve it second and discussion. Do we, on amendments to that motion? Do we retract the motion, Mr. Gorman, as far as making a new one? Or do we add amendments to it if we want them?
You can.
Or do we just vote on it?
You can amend the motion. And I think the current motion, the clerk can speak to that, and I believe it was.
To approve it.
Without any conditions.
Exactly. So that's where I am. I understand friction. I understand both sides of the issue. I understand kids needing scholarships. I understand one individual can sit there and write a check for five hundred bucks and send a scholarship with no friction, no headache, no problems, no disagreement, no agitation. So five hundred is important, five thousand's important, scholarships are important. My kid's got some. The event is bigger than scholarship, the event is a lot of friction. I've heard from both sides and I know we're going to hear this tonight and we're going to hear from both sides. I understand issues and I'm just here to maybe make some amendments to the motion to see if we can get it done, at least this year, and see how it goes. And believe me, it'd be this year and see how it goes. That'd be my only way to approve the motion for the license with amendments. That's my personal take on it. My amendments to approving this license would be, one, as Mr. Gorman said, no ticket sales the day of the event. I would also like to put on a limit of one hundred and twenty-five riders, as Mr. Rollins, I believe.
Is that riders or attendees?
I'm sorry. Participants, attendees. Riders, 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 because you're going to have fans. Okay, riders. Okay, fans. One hundred and twenty-five riders. That's what I think the permit from the police was issued for. And the requirement that the roadie police detail. Get a special use and a police detail will be assigned, just to make sure that everything is done proper said.
Mr. President, the application says more than one hundred and twenty-five persons on property.
Right.
More than one hundred and twenty-five persons on property.
Persons. I thought that was riders, I'm sorry. I thought I heard riders. Maybe I heard wrong. Persons. All right. Well, how does that fit into the ordinance and the issue and the event?
Because the ordinance says that if you have more than one hundred and twenty-five persons on property, then you must get a license. So all the chief was saying is that the permit requires.
Persons.
Right. As far as more than one hundred and twenty-five people, it's perfect with the assumption that there would be more than one hundred and twenty-five. But if you want to set a number.
I thought that would be advised. Of riders or persons?
That's up to you. I mean, I think.
How many riders was it last time? Twenty-fourteen?
No, one.
How many participants were in the last event?
Twenty-fourteen, do we have any idea how many participated?
Three hundred?
How many riders?
Three hundred or so.
Three hundred riders? Riders.
And then we need staff to make sure everybody's safe.
And there were no issues. And we've been doing it for thirty years and there's never been any issues. And we used to have nine hundred.
The applicant says the number of attendees is approximately one hundred and twenty-five each day. This is an estimate based on prior events and is consistent with the number witnessed in twenty-fourteen when the event was held. So approximately one hundred and twenty-five attendees each day.
Well, Mr. President, I think we have a motion on the floor, am I correct? And I'm not willing to change my motion, so I want to make that motion. I want to continue that motion and see if we can second it.
You had to second it. In other words, for the just, just.
Okay, we can have a vote.
Without amendments to it?
Without amendments to it. All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So that motion, for the record, didn't pass. Now, I'm still, I'd like to make a motion to advance this license with the stipulations that, one, they get a special use permit.
Wait a minute, if we voted and it didn't pass, are we, next, can we do it again?
It could be with one, with amendments. He originally had his motion. With all amendments, but he didn't want amendments to it. So we took a vote on that, but we can vote on.
And we can vote on as many iterations of it as.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, that's good, you checked.
Thank you.
All right. Again, I'd like to make a motion to advance the license, approve this license with the stipulations that a special use permit is gotten to satisfy number thirteen on page three of the permit application. And also that no ticket sales would be done the day of the event and that we have assigned a police detail for throughout the day.
Because the reason they put the one twenty-five is because that's the point at which a police detail would be.
Right, okay.
I believe so. They expect more than one hundred and twenty-five.
So basically then, as far as limiting.